Would entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close name, say name. Yeah, I have it. Minutes of last month's meeting are approved. At this time, we have a presentation of petitions, communications, and notices in a general question period for the members of the community. Anyone wish to speak?
Oh, I have a question about an exemption that I was interested in pursuing with the village. And I know I talked to you, Jeff. Didn't know if you had learned anything regarding that.
Well, what I did find from my research and from what Donna was able to find out, it appears that it's something that's handled by the assessor for the town. And in this case, the assessment is done through the county and that's handled through them. And they approve or disapprove the exemption and then we would just follow suit.
And who is that? Who is the assessor for the village?
Jim Guigno, the county is now doing it. And he's available at the town hall every Friday.
Okay.
Okay, so what I read is you have to make the application to him. And if they approve it, then it goes into effect. And we have approved it here, I guess, previously. So we would just follow suit.
If they, okay. And I, my question too is, is the exemption that they give me on a new assessment? In other words, will he or will they come to my home, reassess before the, and then give me the exemption?
That I can't answer. You'd have to talk to Jim Guigno about that. The village doesn't do any assessments at this time. We contracted with the town and now the town is contracting to the county. So they would handle that. So you'd have to address your questions to him because it's, from what I read, it's totally done through the assessor's office. So he would be able to answer that question for you.
Just wanted to add, you could call him at the Clinton County Government Center.
I actually talked to him. I went to the town a couple of Fridays ago. And at first, he didn't believe that it was voted in by the village of Champlain. And then he called me back and said that it was voted in, but he would have to come to my home and reassess it. And I was just questioning, you know, is that procedure where I haven't even submitted the paperwork? So I was just curious, and that's what I talked to Jeff about, was, you know, I was curious about the process in which that was managed.
To be honest, the wording was quite confusing and we need somebody else to interpret that. It's very hard to follow. It wasn't clear, it was 50% off the first year, but it wasn't really clear about 50% off what.
You did get the paperwork that I just sent here?
Yes, I did.
Okay. And you understand my concern? I felt like, am I shooting myself in the foot by pursuing this because?
It looked like a good deal to me.
Yeah.
You'd be best to check with Jeff to get a good answer. Okay, are there any other questions, Bob?
Is there anything, are you pursuing a water problem on Prospect Street we discussed last meeting or?
Well, yes, and I think it's pretty much the same answer as we had last week or last month. That, you know, we are looking at the long-term solution to this. But we did check with Nikon and they said that we cannot buy any pressure tanks for anybody or can we give special rates for anyone for any reason. So as far as short-term solutions, probably don't have a good one for you. But this isn't the first time this has come up. This is something that came up quite a few years ago and we did dig into it and do a little research. And this is where it ended up then too. There wasn't anything that the village could legally do to help anybody up there with their pressure.
Is there a possibility of a pumping station?
Well, we are, we are looking into a long-term solution to that. There is low pressure in several areas of the town districts, in some areas of the village. We'd like to address that. And it's timely that you mention that because we are working with the town and the village of Ross's Point to try to do a shared services study that would look at all these issues and what's the best way to solve them that would make sense for everybody. So we are looking into it, you know, the first part of this is to do a study, a very in-depth study. And that's where we're at right now. But you don't want to do something that isn't going to make sense in the future or that won't work. You know, there's really not a good solution other than we have more pressure there. And that's probably a taller tank, you know, for that, for your particular area. For some of the outlying areas, the answer may be, you know, a pump or booster pumps or something like that.
When the pumping station on the bottom, you're kind of a temporary fix for now until you go up the tower in a year or two or whatever.
Well, the catch with that is that the tank is fed on the Prospect Street line. So it has to pump into the tower from the Prospect Street line. So if you pump back the other way, then the pump would have to overcome that pump to fill the tank. It's the way it was designed. I mean, it's, I would have to guess from what I've heard that, you know, people knew that when it was put in that it would not be enough pressure at the top of the hill. I can't really, that was put in quite a while ago. I can't address why they did that, but there must have been some sort of reason that they did that. Maybe it would have cost a lot more to build a taller tank at the time or they didn't feel there was enough houses or enough people being served to do that. But the, this is changing. We're expanding, the town is putting in districts and we are looking at it, Bob. I mean, as best we can and the study is going forward, so.
The gentleman that you saw here with us before, we're an engineering consulting firm. They're going to help us look at what we have for infrastructure and how to address the pressure issues that we're talking about, plus the hardness of the water and.
But you're talking long-range, you're talking here.
Yes, at least. Because it's not just an isolated problem, it's a problem throughout the system. And in order to fix that problem throughout the system, it's going to be a matter of doing some big things. It's not just one or two small things that we're going to solve.
We are concerned about it. Is there anyone else that had any comments, public comments?
I have another question about the exemption. The state said the exemption applies to homes purchased or contracted before December 31st of 2005. Is this something that's got to be voted on by the village yearly?
No, it's, it's a local law now.
Okay, because we just bought a home a few days ago, so we'll be able to apply for this exemption as well.
Well, if you follow the rules set forth in that.
One other question, Jeff, has anybody ever applied for it before?
Well, I've only, I've only been in office for a year, so no one has done, that I know of, ever?
I don't think there's any other village in the county that has this.
There isn't.
Oh, so groundbreaking.
How long has it been voted in?
2003 is when the law was voted in.
Really?
Yeah, so I'm not positive what month was 2003.
Two years, it's been.
Any other questions or comments? If not, if not, we will move on to the report of the.
One more, Jeff, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I don't want to take all the time here. We're both new homeowners here in the village and we want to.
Well, welcome to Champlain.
Well, thank you, and I'm happy to be here. We want to get involved and would like to be part of a committee that, as far as beautification and building Champlain any way that we can. And I've talked to some people, other people locally that I think are showing an interest. And I guess I'd like to know what the process would be and who, you know, who we would talk to here and so that things are done in the right order. So we're just kind of putting that out there.
Well, that's good to hear.
Yeah, I mean, I know I've talked to Amy on the phone. We haven't, this is our first face-to-face meeting, actually.
Nice to meet you.
So, you know, we would like to maybe form a committee and just get involved.
That's nice to hear.
That would be outstanding.
So, and I think if we go through the board, of course, we would make sure that things are done right and things are expediated, you know, as far as process. And if you can direct us, that's kind of what we're hoping, that you can give us some direction.
As we're going to bring up a little later in the meeting, that's one of our targets for next year is to try to make the village a little more pleasing to the eye. And we're all for that if you want to help.
Is there funding available or are there places that we can look for it that we haven't? Rather than taking the board's time tonight, who would we talk to?
Well, I guess you could start with the Streets Committee. Kim and Steve.
It's called Streets Committee?
Streets and sidewalks, Streets and sidewalks or something like that.
Normally, what I think what's happened in the past is that the mayor actually at organizational meeting sets, approves the committee, beautification committee, and you pick a chair or co-chair like the other committees that you establish at organizational meeting.
Well, timing would be good for that because we do those appointments in April.
Right. And there used to be money in the budget for that, but that's something the board obviously.
And we are doing our budget, so it's a good time to bring that up.
There are grants and things out there for beautification of downtowns, you know, especially like our area. But it's, you know, getting someone to write the grants and that's what we're working on too, is grant writers at this time. You know, so that we can work on it. But then as far as recreation and all of that, you can talk to me about that. And obviously, the winter carnival, we don't have much to have at carnival because that's what I was going to bring up at this meeting.
You were going to?
Yeah, it's just not going to happen right now until we get a nor'easter. And then we can schedule it, you know, once we get some snow. But, you know, right now, there's nothing to do. We could invent some, you know, really interesting games on grass, but. Guys, hopefully, we're going to get those two feet of snow, you know, that they got and they don't want.
Did you want to talk about the park yet?
Is there any plans at all for a public park for children at all?
There's the Venn Park that's kind of on hold, that's been on hold for many years. And I'm not sure where they stand on that and I'm not sure who's running that.
I don't think that's going anywhere at this point.
Is it for sale?
And then there's only the rec park at the elementary school.
Well, we just recently acquired some property by the river. And we are looking at doing some things with that. We don't have any very many specific plans other than bolt launch, which we're going to finish up and have some benches down there and that. But we, you know, there, I think there's a playground at the school that's available. And we intend, you know, to take this property by the river and try to improve it. We can't build anything there. All we can do is, actually, the park is probably not the only thing we can do.
Right on River Street, right by the funeral home, take a right and it's right all along there. The bolt launch is towards the end of that road before you hit the sewer plant.
Now, what about like a dog park or something that will appeal to a lot of people and Champlain have dogs? And I'm always seeing them walking. But to kind of deter them from letting their animals go on the side of the road? Just have a place that we can fence in that's all open, that they can just let their dogs go? And like have like little toy fire hydrants? Just to kind of keep the village clear?
Yeah, a lot of that runs into liability issues, insurance issues. That's where our hands are tied. You know, I personally would love to get a skate park put in downtown. But there's a lot of insurance issues and liabilities for it. But I would love help with that and, you know, help in pursuing the legalities and whatnot and what we can or can't do down there. But I would love to get things done, so if we'll get together, that would be great.
Yeah, that's something that, you know, beautification committee, that's something that they would look into, what people would be interested in and what direction they may want to take. So, you know, some things we will be, we would be able to do, some things we wouldn't. But that's the way to investigate it. I'm glad some people are concerned.
So we would brainstorm, a group of us, and then bring it to the board and just say, is this doable?
Yeah.
Is that the process?
Okay, are there any other comments till we proceed? If not, Mike, could we have our code enforcement report?
Yeah, all over the wall. Dealing with a couple of different garbage issues around the village. The whole landlords, I should say, that bring up some of these apartments with garbage around them. The building down on the corner of Church and Main Street, Titanium Era owned it. They were the ones that had the broken windows and stuff. They fixed all that, so. The buildings on Church Street should be all enclosed now. The old Papio building and that one there. There's an expansion that's going to be happening in the industrial part at Main Knitting. They bought, you asked about subdivision earlier? They bought an acre of land there, so they have to have subdivision approved by the planning board here. So I just received the maps today in survey, so we'll be scheduling that. This is supposedly a phase two expansion. And speaking with the Area Development Corporation. Phase one, phase two was authorized when they did their initial site plan review with the village. And Ms. Kurtz mentioned that as long as they don't deviate from what phase two was, we don't have to have the planning board review of this. But I don't know what phase two was, I haven't been able to find that out yet, so we're not sure yet. The engineers are proceeding under the assumption that we're going to have to have a planning board review of this, so it might not be such a bad thing. On the Horizon Heights project, I talked with Mr. Fleming and he is planning on continuing up there this spring. They just shut down for the winter when it got cold earlier. They have a few different things to do, but he does plan on doing it. He has some different ideas for the rest of it, which he may come back to the board for, but still on the talking stages for now. I did have one interesting phone or message today and I researched this. Someone wants to have fowl inside the village. And I can't find anywheres in the local code or the zoning law that says you can't. Other than the zoning law says if it's not a listed use, it would have to be a used variance, but. Pets and dogs, cats, whatever, don't fall into the zone. I don't know what the board wants me to do with this here. I can see all kinds of problems with this, that somebody really wanted to. I mean, there's no stipulations on anything. At one time, I was talking with Donna, she mentioned that horses were allowed within the village. I mean, this might be going back a while, I don't really know, but I can't even find that, so.
How does the town handle that?
Well, the town is not an incorporated village, so, you know, it's more rural where actually we're allowed to do it. I mean, your houses aren't clustered together like they are in the village. But if somebody wants chickens, you think of two or three, but what if they want 100? 50 of them are roosters at four in the morning.
It's meant to be in the summer when it's 90 degrees.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, I could contact Mr. Keeble, see what his take is on this, but.
What about Ross's Point zoning?
They have a specific section in their zoning that doesn't allow. And they've got a definition and it's pretty precise. But in our zoning here, it doesn't mention anything. And I couldn't find anything in the code book and we've had the latest version updated here, so. And the last thing is on that big grant that we've all applied for. I don't know if I mentioned it to anybody, but we've gotten word that they're going to be opening or awarding the grant sometime in May. So that's a lot sooner than what we had thought. Hopefully, we'll get something if we don't get it all. Other than that, that's all I have, is either. Any questions?
Yeah, Mike, there's new damage downtown. The old apartment building, the first floor windows are all blown out.
You're talking about the building, right?
You know, the steps go up, the steps go down.
I've talked with him and he's in the process of repairing some of that. He wants to shore up the back wall. He has intentions of making, developing apartments inside that building. So he does, he knows about it. Apparently, there was some vandalism there and a few other places at the time. But he knows about the doors open and he's supposed to be closing them up. But he's going to be, he said he's going to start working there this spring, so.
Well, he's got to board those things up before spring.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, because there's a broken door and.
Yeah, and two windows, I believe, now.
It could be.
It's gotten worse.
Yeah. Other than that.
But what are your recommendations on, Mike, about the fowl thing as far as?
I would suggest that we look at local laws from, say, Ross's Point or the town or other areas and see what they have and at least get something in the books too. I mean, it's funny, it's chickens, but it could be anything. Somebody wanted pigs here, there's nothing. You get an irate neighbor that wants to get eaten with somebody, some people will go to great extremes to prove point.
Chickens would do it!
It's funny, but.
So that would have to go through the zoning board?
The zone, you'd have to ask the zone. The way the process works is the town board, you're the ones that pass the local laws. But normally, you would ask for input from the zoning board because this is sort of their specialty, researching this stuff. The zoning board doesn't have the authority to pass any laws. Village boards, town boards would do that.
They would research?
Yeah.
Come back to us with a proposed law and then we could be liked on it?
Yeah, basically, you could send a letter to them or. It would be best if it was sent by letter, just sort of out of paper trail. The chairman or myself or whoever, just asking for research on this. Recommendations, if you would. And that's all I have.
Thanks, Mickey. Is there any other questions for Mickey? Now we'll proceed with the mayor's report. Tonight, I just wanted to go over some of the things that we had, some of the highlights from this year and some of our targets for next year that we're going to try and achieve. I think it's overall been a pretty good year. We tried to start a lot of new things. We've hired two new public works employees, Mike Rock and Larry Friend. We've selected a new clerk treasurer, Juanita Manoles. We have a new superintendent, Woody Kissel. We've purchased a redundant water pump that's going to be installed this spring to ensure a reliable water supply. We acquired a used plow truck from Ross's Point because it'll get us out a few more years. We acquired a trackless machine with a plow, sander and mower attachments, which should facilitate sidewalk and curbside snow removal. We've purchased new computers to upgrade the village network capabilities. We've begun the first year of a street paving drainage improvement plan. And we're working with Ross's Point and the town of Champlain to develop a water and sewer asset management plan for cost containment and improved quality and delivery. And I want to congratulate the board for the work they've done to accomplish that and I hope we have as productive a year next year. This year, we're hoping to complete the River Street Bolt Launch Project to develop a budget module, model that will reduce the need for future bond issues. We won't be able to eliminate them, but we sure should be able to reduce them. We want to continue our implementation of street paving and drainage plan. And one of the things that probably fits in with what we've heard here tonight is address the issue of the teterating structures in the downtown area. That's going to be a big thing with us this year, that we're going to try and make it a little bit more pleasing. Just wanted to let everybody know that we have a plan and hopefully, we'll be able to execute. Now proceed with the reports from trustees, trustee Chombley.
I really don't have much of a report this month. Glad to see that the ice rink was finally able to get flooded.
Mother Nature.
Frozen. Hopefully, people are enjoying it. Zoning board was canceled last month and again this month, but I'm thinking we have a good reason to get together now. And the fowl issue really needs to be looked at. Mickey, can we get a meeting together or do we now have to wait until next month to bring this issue up?
No, we can call a meeting. Just schedule it, everybody's scheduled.
It has to.
We had a hard time coming up with that one, but.
I know, it went from Tuesdays to Wednesdays and. Donna, that has to be published, is it 10 days and stuff?
I don't think it's 10 days, I think it's like three.
Maybe that's something that we need to, maybe not want to wait another month on that one. And Woody, I was just wondering, will you be putting out a schedule and pricing for streets for this summer?
You'll be having that shortened. I'm just waiting for pricing to come back from the vendors and just about all of it.
Thanks, Kim. Are there any questions on Kim's report? Okay, trustee Martin?
Well, we've been very busy with the shared services situation here and I'm very encouraged by the way that things are going. I'd like to thank Mickey for agreeing to serve as chairperson and Juanita for agreeing to be the recording secretary of this group. Just some general information, we plan a meeting on the first Thursday of each month at 5:00 P.M. We'll move around either the village of Champlain, the village of Ross's Point, or the town of Champlain. It's good news, I think, that they will be opening the bids in May, so we'll get some response from there. We met this afternoon or this evening, just before, with Bernier Carr. And that was an encouraging meeting because we, I think we all agree that we need this study to look at what we need to supply water and to take care of our needs here in the village, the pressure needs and some of the other aspects that have been neglected for a long time and need to be upgraded and updated. And I think that's, I think that's a positive aspect, working with the two, working with the town and working with the village of Ross's Point in this area. It's certainly encouraging that these things are moving forward.
Thanks, Greg. Any questions for Greg? Just one thing I'd like to mention now too is that, you know, to reinforce that, we've gone in the past few years from probably 12% of water and sewer usage being in the, out of the village to approximately 30%. So that is where the growth is occurring at this time and it's very timely for us to be looking into this. Trustee Southit?
Planning board, we're going to met, it sounds like we're going to be getting together here shortly. Mike, that expansion on that building, does that mean any more jobs that you know of?
I haven't really spoken with the people that run the business, just the development corporation and the engineers. Like I say, I haven't seen what phase two to incorporate from the original plan, so. Until we see that, I really won't know. Hopefully, there will be more jobs.
Yeah, you always hope that expansion means more jobs. The only other item I had was the shared services committee that Greg and I jointly work on and we have a resolution in front of us that we need to pass for to talk about regarding that and our commitment to being involved in this shared services committee. That's all I have. Thanks.
Any questions for Steve? No, thanks, Steve. Trustee here?
I'm really short and sweet, our winter carnival isn't going to happen. I do hope that if we do get a nor'easter, that we can throw an event together. It won't take long to do it, especially because I have some help. But due to the fact that there is nothing in the forecast coming, we don't have anything out there, we'll put it on hold, but maybe in March, if we get slammed with some snow, we can get some good activities going. But as long as it stays cold, the ice rink is refrozen and it's a great source for the week of vacation. week of vacation. But other than that, we won't have the added activities unless we get hit with a bunch of snow next week and then we'll throw some stuff together, but there's nothing in the forecast, so. That's all I have right now.
Any questions for me? No, thank you. We'll now have the report of the clerk treasurer.
The revenue and expense report has been copied from the board. We have four purchase requests, one for coal catching in the amount of $402.81. Emergency tire repair, $402.28. Laser, water and sewer billing cards for our new printer. Half to come out of water, $144.75, and the other half to come out of sewer, $144.75. And our last one is a meter reading machine for the touch pads. Half to come out of water for $1,000 and the other half to come out of sewer for $1,000.
Okay. I would like to act on the first three as a group and the last one, act on it individually if you don't mind. Entertain a motion to approve the first three purchase requisitions.
So moved?
Is there any discussion? If not, we'll proceed to vote. Trustee Chonley?
Aye.
Trustee Martin?
Aye.
Mayor Moore?
Aye.
Trustee Southwood?
Aye.
Trustee Garrett?
Aye.
You guys have it? At this time, we entertain a motion for a meter reading machine for touch pads.
So moved?
Second? Okay, discussion?
Yeah. This is a new system.
Yes.
And what are we going to do with the down meters that don't meet this?
It's compatible with our current water meters.
Totally.
Totally.
Okay.
It gives us the opportunity to upgrade to a radio read system and/or a download system that would just punch the numbers right into the computer. You read it, it's stored, you come back, download it on the computer and it would facilitate quicker billing.
Okay, so what is that, what are you looking at as savings by spending this $2,000? Are we looking at a savings because it's more efficient or is it just a nice new gadget we'd like to have?
It's an improvement over our current system.
Of course it's an improvement.
And it gives us the capability to expand as we, as we have more water meters become touchpad compatible. We just have to go by and touch them and as we progress and replace meters over the year, years, we can go with the radio read system and then we can read the meters in a day versus three to four days. There's a potential to go that far off the line.
But that's as we replace?
Yes.
And each meter that we replace is at a cost of...
It's comparable to a...
Is it a lot higher though?
No. $105 to $100 for a regular, regular meter, it's $108 or $104. So the price of the meters is pretty much the same.
But we can't gain the benefit yet until we're all converted to the new ones? As far as the touchpad?
It will read our current touchpad system.
Just by touching?
Yep, and it'll give us the numbers. We still have to write the numbers down unless you wanted to go to the handheld computer part of it, but I was hoping to at least start phasing in these other meters before we went to the handheld computer. But it gives us an opportunity to upgrade as we go along and get, we have to start at a point where we have to build, instead of keep on working in a plane that causes a lot of labor intensive.
Did you explain though that our current machine is not working?
Well, it works, but it's out of its last legs.
Okay, and where is this money gonna come from? We're okay in these accounts for that? No, we have no money for it?
Actually, sewer is fine. It's because we had to do fire hydrants, we had to do our telemetry, which brought our water account down.
So where would we pull the money from?
We're transferring from the power and source for the $1,000 in the water.
Okay.
Recovery equipment. Cost of meter.
Well, I have one question for you, Woody. How long, you know, this upgraded meter, how long would it be before we're utilizing it, utilizing the extra technology? Would it be, we can use some of it right away or soon? We'll be using some of it right away. I mean, as far as the being able to download the billing and all that, or is that something out there? That's another, that's a, that's a greater expenditure if we're gonna go that route right now.
That's the golden egg to go with the golden goose.
Isn't it possible that we could, we can incorporate this technology with what we're doing in the study so that we would look at how we build this into what we're looking at to improve our infrastructure and make it part of a grant or funding?
We could, we could do that, yes.
And what would it cost us to replace what we have right now?
Replace what the...
The unit that is on its last leg with the same type unit?
About $600, but it would be non-compatible to the meters that are out, you know, the newer meters that are being made today. We'd be stuck in a rut with that one system.
So you're saying we wouldn't be able to start changing out meters to the newer type if we continue with this?
Yes.
But our current one is still working, but...
Barely.
Wobbly.
You have to take the battery out, it won't stay turned off.
That's okay.
You go through three or four batteries during your meter reading session for three or four days, if not more.
Get rechargeable batteries.
You'd have to use a kind of platters more than once also.
This machine is in pretty sad shape. And it was a hand-me-down. It wasn't one we purchased new.
So you're saying there's only $3 difference between the newer type meter that you want to start installing that's not compatible with our current handheld?
Yeah, the meter prices are within $3 to $6 difference.
You say it's compatible, you said a bunch of numbers?
See, this gun here would be able to read both meters.
Both types.
Both types, our old meters and our new meters.
What's the ratio like? Some idea between the older meters and the newer ones? What have we replaced? What percentage do you think?
Donna probably better...
Well, the way you were talking the other day, it's probably about half.
Out of 600?
Because Larry said we had like 250.
250.
There's something in that neighborhood.
So it's a significant changeover?
Right, well, we had quite a few touch pads to start with, but yeah, they've been replacing the most of them.
Whenever we repair a meter, it goes to an oil-filled head and a touchpad.
And that percentage is only gonna continue to rise?
Right.
So we have no way of utilizing those existing meters that are out there right now? The touchpad meters?
With the old machine, you go out with a machine, a pencil and two batteries.
I just don't see the advantage.
I'm looking at the advantage of, we have a supplier problem of the current meters that we are using.
Right.
I'm able to get our new meters out of New York State. Delivered freight-free, guys in the area once or twice a month. I have to order my other meters out of Massachusetts to the tune, I think they were $110. My current pricing for meter replacements to these people is $105.98 respectively, depending on the type of meter we need for the location. With these newer meters, we're able to upgrade to a computer read system, eventually going to a drive-by radio system. If you want to wait and continue, I can order a machine similar to what we have, but I wouldn't be able to upgrade to these other meters, I'd have to continue to get the other meters out of Massachusetts. Because that's the sole distributor for Neptune meters.
Aren't there labor cost savings in all this group?
In time, it would be.
If you go from, what's it take us now, three or four days to read the meters?
Something like that, sometimes five, depending on weather.
And it would be reduced to a day, a day and a half?
If we went totally to a meter read, a radio read system, yeah, it'd be about a day and a half at most.
Eventually, with the handheld computer, it just downloads on the computer, so I won't have any inputting to do at all.
So that portion of it we could put into a grant? We could do the machine that we need now and the rest we could incorporate possibly into grant money?
Yes.
That's what we need to do. We can't wait.
Well...
To try and get it all into a grant?
We could try to all get in the grant and we'll be back to, we'd be pushing it off to six, eight months, a year, two years down the road.
Or at least be able to budget this money, is what I'm trying to get at.
Yeah, because where does that leave us in these accounts, you know? And what else do we have that's gonna need to come out before the end of the year? I mean, it's not $2,000, it's not just...
I understand.
Do you have that, the numbers, Juanita, where it will be left in these accounts? And then, Woody, what do you foresee that still needs to come out of these accounts before June?
The one water account equipment is already in the hole.
Right.
And the sewer account, the water, the supply account will have about $1,300 left.
And what else do we have to come out of there before June? We're gonna have to borrow from someone else again?
I don't foresee anything. Was that in the, I believe that was in the collections? Is that in the collection system or is that in the...
Power supply.
Power and supply. Our costs should be going down as...
First of all.
When's the next time you do a reading?
Yeah, if we don't get this one, we'll probably have to get another one.
We'll have to get the $600.
We worked hard to get all, as many meters as we can, could in service. We really wanna...
But then we're flushing $600 if we go and do that now.
Well, maybe the option is to, it's only one more meter reading. If you wait and budget it in for next year, then you'll have a better handle on it, you won't have to be in there.
Could we borrow the town's platters one more time?
Well, they've been doing it for a while now, suffering through a meter readings for a while, so...
If they can find it, if it's available.
I would like another month to investigate this further, understand more where you're going, because I don't understand the meter change-out thing and how that's all gonna be a long-term advantage. Because it's gonna take a lot of work to do that. You're always gonna have that factor of this many are not done yet. That's my suggestion.
Did I miss understand when you said about the, that transmitter that they would put on the house? That's what trans...
I think we, I think maybe we should table this.
Yeah.
We're, we're looking at another five to six days to read meters for this whole ton. But I need to sit down with the water and sort of committee about this and give them a better explanation.
Well, the next reading after that would be mid-June.
Right.
So you're in the new budget year anyway.
Right. Now, is there someone that came up to tell you about this?
I've been doing, I've been doing some research about this and I've received a quote this, today.
Okay.
Well, I think it is the direction that we need to go. Yeah.
Obviously, right?
The sales, the sales representative did come up last week and sat down and spoke with me and explained what the system would do and how, who would expedite things with Donna. It's compatible with our current billing system.
Well, maybe the trustee that's on the water sewer might meet with this salesperson as well.
Okay, well, Kim, do you want to withdraw your second?
Yes.
Woody, do you want to withdraw your motion?
Yes, please.
Okay. So we'll table that for the next meeting.
Thank you.
Thanks, Woody.
Well, now the presentation and warrant and payment. At this time, we entertain a motion to pay the warrant. John, Larry?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
No.
Okay. Then we'll proceed to vote. Trustee Chonley?
Aye.
Trustee Martin?
Aye.
Trustee Southwood?
Aye.
Trustee Garrett?
Aye.
Mayor Moore? We'll now have the report of the superintendent.
I was able to print out my report this month for all you good people. I didn't forget to not copy it. I'm currently getting quotes and prices from various vendors for pipes and culverts, storm drains. In 2002, it was estimated that Pine Street would cost $6,000 for this culvert. That has brought up $2,000 this year.
Why?
Price of fuel oil, price of crude plastics. I'm in contact, but I'm waiting for a return phone call from Chips. I was informed last week that I could purchase the materials with the balance of the funds I have, but I want to make sure I'm gonna get a reallocation after the state's budget passed so I can pave the road after putting drainage in. We have a water leak somewhere out in the village or township, we haven't been able to find it. We're up probably 40,000 to 60,000 gallons a day. It bounces up and down like a yo-yo. We haven't been able to find it.
It's got a cave on the edge.
It's gonna become a sinkhole, I'll have to sink into it soon.
So how do you go about finding that? How do you even go about to find this leak?
Well, we've checked various areas and looked for wet spots or steam coming up from the ground when it's super cold and we haven't found anything. And we've had rural water up here searching. We're members of New York State Rural Water and they haven't been able to locate it. We found a few springs.
So what makes you think it's a leak and not somebody using all this extra water?
I could understand 10,000 gallons a day, but 40,000 to 60,000 gallons a day over north, over our normal usage?
We haven't added anybody new or anything funky's happening?
There's nobody out there that would be using that much water. Received some, I talked to the people at Price Chopper, they're on schedule for those people that are anxiously waiting there.
Oh, and you had mentioned that they said they're gonna be interviewing, do you have a date for that yet?
I haven't heard anything. All I heard was that they're planning on doing some interviewing.
Next, I'll be able to ask, so I was curious if you had a date yet, okay?
Uh, there's a school for, it's sponsored by the Clinton County Health Department and we'll be sending our water people down to Peru in March, dealing with groundwater and surface water rules and regulations and changes. I'm still working on this backhoe trade or seeing what we can do with that expensive piece of machinery that just keeps taking money out of our coppers. And to answer Kim's question, the work scheduled for spring is almost done and the road schedule for the summer work, drainage and paving, will be done by the end of this week. Kind of our agreement, I'm still waiting to hear from them and for when they're gonna hook up the further power on Parket Boulevard for the new building. And I'd like to put out there that ice is for skates and kids, not cars and Jeeps. I've received some reports that there's been a red pickup down there and a four-by-four Jeep spinning on the ice. Somebody sees it, they can call state police or give me a plate number and I'll call the state police.
Do we have any old fencing out back that we can put up to prevent that?
If they're going over the snowbanks, they'll go over the fencing.
There's some spikes in town?
I don't think we could do that.
Don't want to injure any sleepers.
We're going to the liability issue here.
Ah, man.
Good idea, though.
Yeah, I think so.
Anything else?
I see we picked up another shared service with the town using the sewer jet to help them clean out culverts.
Well, this is a shared service, kind of a lend-lease thing. They loaned us the bulldozer in the past for gravel, so it works out well for both of us.
Are there any other questions for the superintendent? If not, we'll move on to correspondence.
We have a correspondence from Bernier Carr and associated regarding the shared service asset management plan. Two, another correspondence from Bernier Carr and associated regarding potential water supply improvements to the village. We have a memo from Superintendent Kissel regarding water samples for the Ridge Road District. Correspondence from D.C. and memo from Superintendent Kissel regarding discharge monitoring report for period ending 11/30/05. Correspondence from Clinton County Health Department regarding positive test results for Coliform in the town of Champlain. Respondents from New York State DOT regarding the chips funds for 2005 and 2000. Respondents from New York State DOT regarding the CHIPS funds for two thousand and five and two thousand and six. Letter from Attorney Kiebel and agreement between the village and Conroy and Conroy relative to the temporary usage of electricity. And a correspondence with Clerk Treasure Munoz. Respond, correspondence from Clinton County Health Department regarding monitoring requirements for our water supply system for two thousand and six. Correspondence from the town of Champlain asking that the village perform test samples requested by the Clinton County Health Department. Correspondence from Park regarding, requesting the village pass a resolution supporting reconfiguration of the Empire Zone.
Please thank you, Juanita. Is there anything anyone wants to add to new business regarding any of these correspondence items? If not, we'll proceed to old business. GSA meters manholes, are we gonna be sending them and, uh, go ahead, Woody?
I've made some phone calls today to the various people within GSA, talked to Trout River. Uh, he was kind of surprised that this situation hasn't been taken care of. I said it's been ongoing since two thousand. I'm expecting a return phone call tomorrow. They have a new contractor that performs maintenance at the border. This situation may be rectified before the end of May.
Well, it's, uh, good to hear. Woody found some correspondence from back then that, uh, the well was, it was not put in according to specs. It was supposed to have big vocal doors, it was supposed to be accessible. For whatever reason, it just didn't get put in according to the plans, so... Hopefully we'll get that straightened out, the time order cable franchise. I think we haven't dug on any further with that. As far as the abolition of the justice position, uh, we received a petition to put that to a referendum. So that will be put on the ballot at election time. Uh, a decision, decision is needed whether to do an easement or deed survey for Orville Palmer's property. My feeling is if he's willing to do an easement, I don't know why we just don't do that.
I didn't think we had to do anything.
Gotta be part of the...
If we went with the easement.
Mr. Kiebel still thinks that you're going to need a surveyor of command to measure the exact measurement of the land and what is he's gonna make into the easement to the village.
That, that property's never been surveyed before, or...
It's thirty-five thousand six hundred inches, yeah?
Yeah.
Different surveys?
Well, we'll table that at the next meeting and we'll do a little more research on it. I don't hesitate. It's gonna cost us a couple thousand dollars to do a survey, I would think.
Yeah, I think easement just has to do with how it's described. Whether both parties agree.
Right.
That it's gonna be on his deeds.
Well, we'll, I guess we'll contact, uh, council and see what he has to say regarding this.
Check to see if there's been, uh, surveys done.
Okay, we'll move on to new business. Under new business, we have an employee who completed his Class D certific, water distribution certification. And in light of that, Terry Linkort, I would like to entertain a motion to increase his salary by fifty cents.
So moved?
Second?
Second.
All in favor, uh, well, it's actually a monetary thing. Trustee Chombley?
Aye.
Trustee Martin?
Yes.
Trustee Southwood?
Aye.
Trustee Garrett?
Aye.
Mayor Moore, aye. Congratulations, Terry. I'm glad you're the first one to complete some training. We hope that everyone will lose more training, it's all worth the, uh, the effort. So, congratulations.
Right.
We have two resolutions which we need to act on. The first is regarding the shared services grant. Juanita, did you read that? Everybody tonight, two of them.
There we go. At a regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Village of Champlain, Clinton County, New York, held on February thirteenth, two thousand and six, it was moved by trustee, and seconded by trustee, that the following resolution be duly adopted. Whereas Village of Champlain representatives have been participating with representatives from the Village of Rosas Point, the town of Champlain, the Shared Service Committee, in ongoing discussion of the benefits to be achieved from shared water and service, and sewer services. Whereas there is tremendous public support for the concept of sharing services to reduce costs to system users and taxpayers, particularly in light of the announced closure of Wyeth Pharmaceuticals. And whereas the Shared Service Committee, in consultation with the Environmental Facilities Corporation, has recommended preparation of a three municipality infrastructure asset management plan to determine the benefits and efficiencies of shared water and service, and sewer services. And whereas the Village of Champlain has agreed to serve as lead agent, lead applicant for a shared service municipal services incentive program, grant application for funds to develop and implement a public drinking water and sewer infrastructure asset management plan, which addresses the needs of three municipalities. And whereas Village of Rosas Point, the town of Champlain, have agreed to serve as co-applicant for the joint shared municipal services incentive program grant application. And whereas, two hundred and seventy thousand dollars in shared municipal services incentive program grant monies are being requested to prepare the three municipality infrastructure asset management plan to be matched by ten percent, by ten thousand dollars from each municipality. Now, here it be resolved, the Village of Champlain Board of Trustees hereby authorize Mayor of the Village of Champlain, Jeffrey Moore, to file an application for the joint shared municipal services incentive program grant for the two thousand and five, two thousand and six program year. And further authorizes him to serve as lead contact person in all matters relative to this financial assistance and to execute all financial and/or administrative processes related to the grant program. And be it further resolved, the Village of Champlain Board of Trustees hereby affirms its commitment to serve as lead applicant for the shared municipal incentive program grant to join in an intermunicipal agreement with the town of Champlain and Village of Rosas Point to provide its share of the matching funds. And to continue to work with the Village of Rosas Point and the town of Champlain towards realizing project goals through participat, particip, yeah.
Yeah, that word.
Participation in the Shared Services Committee. The fourth goal was duly put to, a roll call vote as follows. Mayor Jeffrey Moore voting.
Okay, we have to have a motion then.
No.
You're on a roll, slow down. Okay, entertain a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved.
Uh, second?
Second.
Any discussion? Now we'll proceed to vote. Uh, trustee Chombley?
Aye.
Trustee Martin?
Aye.
Trustee Southwood?
Aye.
Trustee Garrett?
Aye.
Mayor Moore, aye. Motion is carried. And now we have a resolution supporting and concurring with Clinton County's application for redesignation of one area within the Village of Champlain as an Empire Zone. Did everybody get a chance to see the map and the expansion? Okay, you can go ahead and read this one through, Woody.
At a regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Village of Champlain, Clinton County, New York, held on February thirteenth, two thousand and six, it was moved by trustee and seconded by trustee that the following resolution be duly adopted. Resolution supporting and concurring with Clinton County's application for redesignation of one area within the Village of Champlain as an Empire Zone. Whereas pursuant to section nine sixty-one of the general municipal law, the county of Clinton authorized pursuant to resolution seven thirty-six dated September twenty-fourth, nineteen ninety-seven, an application to be submitted by the Plattsburgh Air Force Redevelopment Corporation on behalf of the county for redesignation of certain areas of an Empire Zone within meaning of said statute. And such designation was approved as Empire Zone number fifty-six, with a total acreage of one thousand two hundred and eighty acres by the New York State Commissioner of Economic Development and was formally designated by the Empire Zone's redesigna, designation board on June third, nineteen ninety-eight. And whereas the county of Clinton ratified Empire Zone number fifty-six and supported and concurred with expansion of Empire Zone number fifty-six pursuant to local law number one dated February twelfth, two thousand and three. And whereas the county of Clinton supported and concurred with additional expansion, expansion of Empire Zone number fifty-six pursuant to local law number two dated September twenty-second, two thousand and four. And whereas the New York State Legislature and the governor have enacted a new law changing to the Empire Zone, zones program whereby each existing Empire Zone must configure its existing zone acreage into three or six distinct and separate contingent areas. And it has been determined that Clinton County Empire Zone number fifty-six must configure its existing zone acreage into six distinct and separate contingent areas. And whereas pursuant to section nine fifty-seven D and nine sixty-one of the general municipal law, county of Clinton has proposed redesignation of the existing Clinton County Empire Zone number fifty-six into six distinct and separate contingent areas, which will include one area in the Village of Champlain as follows. Area number three at sixty-six point one-two acres for a total of sixty-six point one-two acres in the Village of Champlain. And the boundaries of said area to be included in the Empire Zone number fifty-six in the Village of Champlain shall be as set forth in the map and legal description in Schedule A, which is attached hereto and made apart hereof. And whereas such redesignation may greatly benefit the Village of Champlain and that new business could be encouraged to locate in the Empire Zone. Existing businesses would be encouraged to expand in the Empire Zone and the new and expanded businesses would generate new business, new jobs for the Village of Champlain residents. And whereas, county of Clinton has authorized the submission of an application in compliance with the newly enacted changes to the Empire Zone program for the redesignation of six areas within Clinton County as an Empire Zone with a total acreage not to exceed one thousand two hundred and eighty acres. And whereas the Village of Champlain is desirous of working with the county of Clinton through the Empire Zone program to provide enhanced job opportunities for its residents. And now, therefore, it be resolved by the Village of, Village Board of, in the Village of Champlain, New York, that it fully supports and concurs with the submission of an application by the county of Clinton with the redesignation of one area described above and set forth in Schedule A as an Empire Zone in the Village of Champlain.
Thank you, Juanita, good job.
So moved.
Uh, second?
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Now we'll proceed to vote. Trustee Chombley?
Aye.
Trustee Martin?
Aye.
Trustee Southwood?
Aye.
Trustee Garrett?
Aye.
Mayor Moore, aye. I just have it. That's all new business you have. At this point, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I just have it.